It's six thirty-five. We're gonna start with the Fire Police and Civil Defense with Mr. Mahan with Police Department Quarterly Report.
Thank you, sir. Chief is kind enough to come and let us know, give us an update.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I guess a total recap of two thousand twenty, twenty-three is in order for the Mount Vernon Police Department. Starting with our calls for service, we've had, at this point right here, we've got three days left, but we're a little over sixteen thousand, three hundred calls for service for the year. That puts us about forty-three calls per service average per day. That's everything from barking dogs to more serious felonies and so forth, but...
How's that compared to previous years?
Uh, we're up over the last two years. Uh, our highest was two thousand nineteen, prior to COVID, and then we were about eighteen thousand that year. We were fourteen-four last year, somewhere around there. Our felony drug cases, we've had a hundred and forty felony drug cases that are in the system working right now. Uh, we've had two hundred and ten total felony crimes that were investigated and are pending, uh, the legal process. A lot of these take months and months and months to get all the way through the court system, so... As far as our drugs, we've seized five hundred and seventy grams of methamphetamine this year, uh, four grams of heroin, sixteen grams of cocaine, uh, over a thousand grams of marijuana, which will go way down next year, I'm sure. Uh, and the scary one is fentanyl. We see sixty-four grams of fentanyl this year. And that's, that's the scary one. That's the one.
How do you protect your officers from touching this?
We have, we have a policy that if anybody sees anything in a powder form, we don't get near it until we have proper protective safety measure gloves, masks, things like that. Uh, if we see something that's in a powder form, we don't try to field test it with our little field tests. We, uh, we send it straight away to the lab where they have the facility. We double bag it. That being said, we have had officers exposed to fentanyl before and earned themselves a trip to the emergency room. So, being careful is our best, our best defense against that. Uh, we've also taken twenty-two guns this year off the street here in Mount Vernon. We've responded to over three hundred traffic crashes so far this year. Uh, about twenty-five hundred total arrests and citations have been made so far this year. Conducted about four thousand traffic stops, which is up from last year. We've investigated thirty-four sex offenses of all types this year, and we've had a hundred and sixty domestic violence cases this year. And that's just a, that's a broad recap of, of what we've done. We've hired five people this year. We've hired five new officers to fulfill the vacancies we had and to add the three officers that, uh, were added to the bottom line this year. We've hired five people. We still have two positions left to fill. So, uh, we're working towards that. We just hired a young man named Jackson Scott, straight out of the Fire Police Academy. Uh, the mayor swore him in last week, and he actually started on Christmas Day, so he won't ever forget his, uh, start date, I hope. We have conducted about fifteen hundred hours of training, all combined, this year with all the different officers. That includes about nine hundred hours that's mandated by the state of Ohio. Uh, each officer is mandated to complete twenty-four hours of advanced training each year, um, by the state of Ohio. We call them CPTs, Continuing Professional Training. Uh, that is mandated, and the subject courses are mandated by the state of Ohio. They include legal, uh, legal sections, mental health sections, uh, officer wellness, use of force, self-defense, firearms, trauma, uh, stress classes for officers to how they cope with stress, uh, diversity classes to how to deal with a diverse population in our state. Uh, those are some of the topics that, that are required each year for us to do our mandatory training on. Our community advocate division, which consists of Dan Jackman, our community advocate, and now Tara Hensley, our domestic violence liaison. Uh, Dan responded to four hundred and ninety-eight calls so far this year. Four hundred and ninety-eight calls. We've taken approximately, uh, twenty-one people to the hospital this year for, uh, evaluation, uh, what we call a pink slip, which would be a non-voluntary. We've probably taken double that number in people that have gone voluntarily. Tara, since she's been on, has had, uh, she's already been on a hundred and fourteen calls. Uh, not all of them are domestic violences, but she's staying busy doing with that, doing that, and going, she is going on different types of calls, too. Yeah, and some better news, we got, we got several grants rewarded to us this year. You're all familiar with the retention grant we got that provided each officer with a four thousand dollar retention bonus. Uh, that really did wonders for the morale at the police department, and the officers, the officers enjoyed having that, and Mr. Scott was able to get that out to us when the state did, very quickly after the state did, and, uh, kind of was a Christmas bonus for all the officers. So, we also received a VAWE grant, which was Violence Against Women grant, in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars last year to help us pay for our domestic violence liaison. I just got word the other day that we received it again for next year, so we have got, they renewed the grant for another thirty-five thousand dollars next year. Uh, along with that, we got a JAG grant, which is a Justice Administration grant, for the FLOC cameras, the, the license plate camera system. Uh, we got a fifteen thousand dollar grant for that last year, and I also received word we applied for it and received a new grant for it next year to continue that program. So, so far, we're batting a thousand on the grants we've, we've applied for. Our traffic officer, uh, Mr. Crowbridge, he has been very instrumental in keeping the traffic down. We have had, uh, numerous, uh, requests for his services to be out there in different areas of town, and I think he's responded very well to those different areas that we, we highlight and the citizens highlight as problem areas. He goes out there and works in very diligently. He's written over a thousand tickets this year. Uh, and it's not all about writing tickets. He also wrote over six hundred warnings. So, he balances out the number of warnings he gives with the number of citations he gives. Uh, he's got a very high success rate in court. Um, he also responded to a hundred and twenty-four accidents this year, investigated those. So, that's a good program that's, that's really going on. Uh, our nighttime traffic officer, he hasn't been in the position very long, and we're still using him a little bit on the road as well, but he's also led the department with DUI arrests this year. So, we're looking at twenty-plus DUI arrests from this young man this year. So, uh, the officers are out there, the officers are, are working the problems, and they're just doing a phenomenal job. I'm proud of each and every one of my police officers at the Mount Vernon Police Department, and hopefully we have nothing but good things to go in the future. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Do you see any illegal, uh, do you see any illegal around here that's coming in?
Illegal...
Aliens?
Illegal aliens? Uh, we have a small population. I believe that, that our undocumented workers are illegal aliens, whatever the terminology is popular these days. Um, do we see them as a, they're not a standout, uh, section of our, our criminal element?
We don't have a huge amount coming here?
I don't believe so. No. I do not believe so. Traffic is the only real area. We, we have some problems with the, with the folks that come here. They don't have driver's licenses. And they have an international driver's license that you could make on a printer pretty much anywhere, and they think it works. Uh, so, uh, we, we do have some driving issues with them, but, but for the most part, no. We do not.
How are we doing with the safety updates to middle school, high school, five-eight-six?
I don't know where exactly we're at on the construction part of, I'd have to ask Mr. Ball or, or, uh, Mr. Platt.
Have you had any signs or anything yet?
We have not. The sign, yes.
They're ordered, but they're not here yet.
They've ordered them. Um, last I heard is they're waiting for some good weather to get out there to do some of the concrete work, right?
We need the signs first. So, yeah, we'll do the concrete work in this break. I can come up here and report.
Okay.
Just so you can hear me, the signs are ordered, have not been received. We need to put the signs up before we put the hardscape in, otherwise we're putting people in danger.
Have we added Mr. Crowbridge out there at all?
Yes. He patrols out there on a regular basis.
And that has been, made a significant difference, especially at school release times.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns?
Chief, we appreciate your work.
Thank you, sir.
Glad for the new promotions for Captain Burns and Lieutenant.
Yes, we have, uh, we have a new captain. Andy Burns is our new captain. We promoted him last month, uh, or, excuse me, earlier this month, and, uh, he's, uh, he's taken off, is gonna do well. Uh, we are having a promotion. We got two sergeant spots that are coming up, so we got a test that's, uh, gonna happen. The written part's January fourth, and the assessment center will be January twentieth, so at the end of the month, we'll have two sergeants to promote to fill in, backfill the, the vacancies we've had. So...
Chief, you have a couple more minutes, so...
Yes, sir.
Why don't you give us an update on where you think the new police station's gonna be and how that's gonna work out?
Well, I think, uh, I think we've decided the new police station's gonna be on Psyche Road. Uh, it's a good location for us. We looked at a lot of different options of where we could put it. Um, and we don't need to be centrally located downtown like the judge prefers to be. Uh, we do have walk-in traffic, but it's not as great as what the court is, and we utilized a piece of property that the city bought in two thousand and five, I think, uh, and has been unutilized since then. So, uh, fortunately for the police department, it may not need the, the environmental studies or the historical society, uh, studies or anything like that to, to begin construction on it. It's a flat piece of ground with an old, an old pole barn sitting on it. So, um, pre-building is a lot, is a lot simpler, I think, than some of the other construction projects they've got going on. Um, we are, and the, and I will speak for the judge on this, we're, the judge, myself, I think I can speak for Mr. Boren, we're all in dire need of new spaces in our building. Uh, we just walked out, we just saw, walked out and saw another, uh, another sign that our building is, is on its last legs. Uh, that being said, we're gonna, we're gonna make it habitable for us and try to have it look decent for the people coming into our town to see our police department. But, uh, it's time. We, we, we've got to have some, we're outgrowing it. Uh, we're moving some offices to the second floor this, this fall to open up some office space when we get some new people and new positions. We're gonna, we have, we're just out of room. So...
There'll also be other things we don't have now, like a shooting range and a, and a protection area in case of disaster and things like that.
That is part of the plan. Uh, our, the training area with the shooting range that we have, uh, designed into this plan will greatly enhance our ability to do onsite training. Uh, right now, the range we use is out in, out in Howard, across from Apple Valley, Campbell's Range, if you, if you folks know that, and Craig Campbell and his family have been amazing to us. They charge us nothing to go out there. We can go out there anytime we want to, but it is ten miles from town or eight miles from town, and, uh, we can't control the weather on it. So, um, and we have to, and there's a civilian group that uses it out there, too, so we have to balance that. But for training purposes and, and a regional storm shelter that we're looking at incorporating into the plans of this building altogether, I think it's a, I think it's a good multi-purpose building. Uh, we incorporate a large, very large training room, indoor training room, climate-controlled, that would probably be one of the bigger gathering places for any type of meetings or any type of official functions in the city. Uh, so we're looking at that, complete with, so we could do trainings, we could do, uh, banquets, we could do, I mean, we, there's a lot we can do with it. We tried to make it as multifunctional as we possibly could.
Looking forward to that. Thank you, Chief. Anything else, Mr. Mahan?
No, sir. Thank you, sir.
We're adjourned the, uh, Fire Police and Civil Defense Committee. We're gonna move now to Streets and Public Buildings. Mr. Severance, discuss the Upper Gilcrest Road construction.
Yes, sir. Engineer Ball is gonna come up and give us an update. I asked for this at the last meeting, and so...
All right. So, two, two things. So, we have on the docket tonight a discussion of getting a construction inspection company. The purpose of that would be mainly to look at the, uh, housing projects. Right now, we have, one of my assistants is, uh, basically oversees, our project manager, project engineer, oversees field operations. You know, we have, four of our own construction projects going on. We haven't been keeping a good eye on the development projects, most of which now are on Upper Gilcrest Road, eventually maybe on Newark Road. So, that's on the docket tonight to talk about. I can come up. We would ask you pass that, uh, tonight. The other aspect is the, I know I wasn't here at the last council meeting, but with that development, Upper Gilcrest Road is essentially a township road, and with, you know, some topography that's not conducive to the amount of traffic that's gonna be on there, traffic signals getting out of date. So, um, last week, if you were out in the ballot at Walmart and happened to drive around to pick out your next Sleigh Ball house or your next spot in the Rockford subdivision, we had GPD's survey team was out, uh, getting started. So, we partly funded their survey efforts, to get the project started. They had a cancellation on another town and were able to get to us right away. Uh, one thing Mr. Scott and I just did was, uh, one of the larger numbers you're gonna see in the budget is, uh, in the Tiff district, um, so they're gonna continue working. So, one of the things we're asking for in the interim budget is to, uh, you know, fund the, we did not fully fund the survey and the geotechnical explorations and, or the complete design. Now, intentionally so because that work was not gonna get done in twenty-three. So, in the interim budget, we'll be kicking off immediately and keeping our friends with GPD funded, and then most likely, we would hire a construction inspector to keep an eye on the, uh, the housing developments. The main thing we're looking at is all of these developers that right now are focused on Upper Gilcrest Road and then also at Ohio Eastern Star are building infrastructure that when they're done will be handed over to, uh, Mr. Reinhardt and myself, uh, to manage this permanent city property. So, they're building water lines, sewers, in some cases, storm drains, not all cases, but, um, depending on whether they have a public or private road. If they have a private road, we still are going to be accepting the sanitary sewer for these different projects. So, when we went back through the records, Mr. Boren and I have done a lot of record searches on the Landing subdivision. We had five individual photographs of those storm sewers and sanitary systems that have the previous engineers had in their records. So, the position of a construction inspector didn't exist when the landing, so fortunately, we have a, one full-time person that is doing field operations, but with the number of projects, we're not getting everything covered. So, I'll open up for questions.
When I was out there this week going past there, I noticed how narrow that road is. Uh, we have to purchase land in order to widen that?
We're not sure yet. Um, we do have an agreement in the development. Uh, many of you may recall, when we talked about, talked with Rockford, they're going to provide us land through an easement to build the bike trail. So, if we were to purchase land from them, that would change their setbacks, and they didn't wanna do that. So, they're gonna offer us a permanent easement and contribute to the, uh, the sidewalk bike trail on the east side of the road. So, we may have to purchase some slivers of land from other folks, or we may, you know, narrow up a little bit.
What about the radio station or the health department or any of those areas right, right at the intersection?
Right at the intersection, um, I've actually met with both owners. There is a very wide platted roadway, so they, whoever, when we, probably when the city did the ODOT project, had planned for the, the turn lane, so that, that property was, has already been acquired in the last plating of that, that roadway. So, those two properties would not be affected. Uh, again, Rockford has already offered to get us past their property with a bike trail, and then we have to see if we wanna continue that. Uh, Sleigh Ball, part of his property, has already built the sidewalk, and that'll be platted to us. So, there may be some, but it's not a major, at this point, it's not a major issue.
Questions? When do you plan on starting the Gilcrest Road project?
Uh, we've already started design, so we will be continuing the, continuing design into twenty-four, and as we get through twenty-four, we'll work with the administration and council to start seeing if there's any ODOT, uh, funding opportunities, and then we would, you know, we're a couple of years out.
Because I did have a resident ask, you know, there's not a lot of residents, older residents on that street road, but they're the most concerned.
Yeah.
And when you talk bike path, sidewalk, whose sides is coming on, how close is it gonna be, those type of questions are starting to, to get out there. So, I would appreciate you make as much public as you can about what's gonna happen and, um, work with these people as you go, so they know when the shovel's coming.
Yeah.
Where it's gonna go to.
Right. So, very similar to, let's just take Mansfield Avenue as an example. We're gonna put together a couple, couple boards with plans on it, and we'll go out, it's easy to go door-to-door. There's, you know, four or five people, and then the, the different HOAs, and we'll get their opinions on what they wanna see and what their concerns are. You know, with, with Mansfield Avenue, we've made a lot of changes to the project to pick up those, those concerns. So, at this point, we don't have, like, the boards and the pictures. We're trying to make sure, you know, we know where the right-of-way is and, uh, see what room we have to work with. There's a lot of drainage problems. There's old road ditches are in failure, so we're trying to get this, so one, go out there and do it once, not twice.
So, Brian, the road out there is not in the best condition right now, and I, I don't know what kind of potholes will start coming in. And then, obviously, we have a lot of heavy trucks going in there with heavy equipment right now. Are we gonna be maintaining that road to some level in this next year and a half or two years?
Yeah.
To make sure that we don't have major potholes and even along the side of the road. I know the, the burn gets real pitted and everything, and it just, because the road's not very wide, then it's easy to hit those.
Yeah, we would be, I'll look at Terry. Do you remember the township agreement? We maintained that section because we traded them for south of Yager Road. So, we have a five-year renewing contract with the township on, because part of this is in the township, part of it's out, depending on which house we're at. So, our agreement is to maintain that section, and then they maintain, um, Yager to, uh, New Gambier. So, yeah, we'll be maintaining it if we need to do repairs or, you know, we probably won't completely resurface it.
Right.
Just because this project's pending, but we will maintain it like any other street. And it may need a little more work with all that truck traffic, because it wasn't designed for that level of truck traffic.
Right.
While we have you there, um, Grange Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
How are we doing? When, when can those phone calls stop about, when are you gonna be out of there?
So, they will be back on the second. So, the crew's taking this week off for Christmas and New Year's. They will be here full blast on the second. The, uh, the next step is to install the water line on Grange Avenue, and so they'll be, I don't have, like, a finish date, but they will be working on it continuously until it's put back together.
And then the one question I was asked on that, so we're, I assume we're gonna be done somewhere towards spring, correct?
Most likely, yes.
Or shortly after?
Mm-hmm.
They, the question was asked, am I gonna have to wait to have my street paved when the city paves everybody else's in the middle of October?
No, they, that contract includes paving.
So, they'll be doing it soon after?
Yeah, they should be.
Thank you.
They should have that prioritized, because it is, it is one-third not there right now.
Yeah.
By the time we get done, it'll be two-thirds not there. So, we, the plan is to get at least a base course right away.
Is it going as expected?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, we did hit a little piece of bread rock. It was about five feet. We had to stop and get some different equipment in to break that, but other than that, there was quite a bit of groundwater in the pipe. So, we really didn't, I don't think we got to the success of the, till we got to the end. The last couple manholes, I think, really eliminated some of the groundwater coming into the sanitary sewer. So, I went out, you know, Jason's been spending a lot of time there, making sure we get all the questions answered and helping the homeowners through their questions. So, you know, it was really a project that, that came to this council by, uh, you know, people speaking in two thousand sixteen. You know, you, I don't know if you were, I think Mike was here, but they were really concerned about the groundwater and the lack of storm drains. So, it's a citizen-led project, and then, of course, the EPA order didn't help, didn't, it helped us, uh, make sure we prioritize the project.
All right.
Finished?
Yes.
Thank you. We're gonna adjourn the Streets and Public Buildings. We'll move now to, uh, employing community relations with Mrs. Woods, discuss wa- water and wastewater staffing. Mrs. Woods?
Thank you, sir. So, Mr. Sowers, um, we have ordinance twenty-twenty-three forty-five and twenty-twenty-three forty-six, and you just handed me a bunch of amendments to those. So, I guess I'm gonna start out with a couple of questions of, I feel like we're doing this backwards. We're days away from having a budget meeting, and yet we're wanting to change up. So, after the last meeting, I asked for, um, what this, what these positions looked like a couple of years ago, and then Mr. Zick made some changes, and then these, and I wanted to see that progression.
Yep. And Mr. Reinhardt, how's that for you?
Okay.
And it, I, and it should have been distributed via email, and if it didn't get to everybody...
It was not. I was hoping to have some time to look at it before this evening.
So...
While he's doing that, can we also talk about, there was an email that went out about some positions that were being pulled back into the bargaining unit. So, are some of those positions that are now eliminated from this, are they the ones that got pulled into the bargaining unit?
If you're referring to the email that contained the attachment with the union support letter, is that what you're referencing?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, I believe twenty-twenty-three forty-five, there's twenty-twenty-three forty-five and twenty-twenty-three forty-six. Twenty-twenty-three forty-five references the union positions, and then twenty-twenty-three forty-six references two AD positions. One is the AD of the water plant, and one is the AD of maintenance. Those two positions are not union positions, so the union did not take a position on those, those particular positions. It's not that they're particularly being pulled out of anything. Um, they're being created. Uh, so, the union, uh, of course, in their letter, didn't take a position on that, but they did, as Mr. Hillier, uh, requested in the last meeting, wanted to know if we had reached out to the union, uh, for input. And so, Director Reinhardt and I did just that. We met with the local representatives from the union and, uh, had a conversation with them, and they were supportive, and they created a letter of support, but they, of course, you know, only made a, made a comment on the union positions that were being created and not, uh, not the administrative positions, because that is a prerogative of the city.
So, what's been handed out here, this is the proposed changes.
These are the proposed changes.
But not where we currently sit.
And not where we currently sit. And as you, you will soon be explained, and I'll let Mr. Reinhardt do that, since he's the guy in the deep in it, literally and figuratively, every day, he will be able to more eloquently do that. But if I can just give you an overarching view here, you know, there was some restructuring recently. I don't believe it, uh, was able to be entirely completed. However, um, you know, I, I'm not Rick Zick, I'm not Tom Marshall, but I can tell you, whatever their aim was, um, it left us with significant lack of redundancies and, um, some significant liabilities. I'm sure that the intentions were there, uh, did not have a conversation with Tom Marshall, I didn't have a conversation with Rick Zick. I had a conversation with our administration, had a conversation with our auditor, and I had a conversation with the current director of utilities. And we went through each department within the department, and we found our goals and objectives. We found where there were, gaps in leadership and, uh, in that workflow, and I, I leaned on the expertise of somebody that, uh, that I trust, and he's gonna walk you through what we think will close that gap. So, take it away, A-Ron.
Good evening, council. Hope everybody had a wonderful holiday. Uh, we'll start here with page one, the green section. This is the structure of the wastewater treatment plant. At the current time, we have one assistant director and nine O and M operation and maintenance techs, so, in the left-hand... techs, so in the left-hand upper box there. We want to take one of those operation and maintenance techs and assign it to a chief operator position in the gray, in the middle there. With doing that, we will have the redundancy, the chief operator can take care of the assistant director, chief operator can take care of the lab position, the sludge operation, or the operators, either position there. To do this, it'll take $1,226.61, since we already have that position and staff in place for that.
Can you repeat that?
For?
The cost?
$1,226.61.
Oh, it's right there.
Per the, per the position, per year.
You can find the cost on each of these pages, bottom left, you can find the cost, and then the bottom right, you will find the goals and objectives that creating these positions will allow us to actually address.
So that's the wastewater treatment plant. Now the water treatment plant, there we have one chief operator and six operation and maintenance technicians. We do not have an assistant director at this time and we do not have a lab tech at this time at the wa, or water treatment plant, so we'd like to add those two positions. The lab position will be union, the assistant director will be...
Management.
Management, thank you. To add the assistant director of the water treatment plant, it'd be $110,566.64. To add the lab position would be $77,036.57. And then we have our goals and objectives to implement a backflow program, update and keep current emergency response plan, contingency plan, source water protection, asset management plans. At this time, those are not being updated like they should be, we just don't have the staff with me spending time down at the wastewater plant since we have the assistant director position open. So those would be something that we would have to, if the EPA came in, we would be in violation, we would have to hire a consultant to do those, so this would be a money-saving in the, in the long scheme. Continual modernization of the treatment plant with our increased population here in the future, we need to look at upgrading that. Employee development and retention and facility redundancy. The second one, distribution and collections meters, we have one assistant director, or one assistant director, two crew chiefs, and 11 utility technicians at this time. We'd like to add a crew chief for meters, you can see in the gray box in the middle there. That cost would be $92,309.6. And with this position, we'd be better organized on our meter side, better customer service and coordination, complete the meter change out that we've been working on, a lot of the renewals and moving those outside. Ability to follow up on non-responsive meters, ability to train staff on our census analytics is our program that we read the meters remotely with. Create department redundancy. And a lot of this revolves around the redundancy. Last year, when we had that big ice storm and, or I, it got really cold and everything froze, we were calling retired employees to come in and help find these meters that we didn't know where we're at and where the shut offs were, so created quite an issue. And with this, we can build that redundancy into it. The third part, or the fourth part, is a plant proposed maintenance position, be an AD of maintenance. Be assistant director of plant maintenance, the cost would be $101,159.89. Here we would develop and implement preventative maintenance program, which we do not have right now, consistency between our plants. We have different companies testing fire hydrants, doing, different companies doing backflow, there's never been a consistency between the two plants. This position would also, if we get a project, the gearbox on the clarifier, we would have one guy that could head that up and stay on it. Right now, our assistant director, he gets started on it, gets pulled off in another direction, so this would make us more focused on our maintenance projects and especially with the upgrade coming at the plant, it would definitely ease that and give that oversight. Development implementation of work order system, which we have for distribution and collections and meters, we're working on, we don't have anything like that at the plant yet. And development implementation of asset inventories for the water plant, that's a requirement by the EPA, they're building on that, your assets, what the age of them are, when do they need replaced, so that's something we need to start adding to our program.
Mr. Scott, could I ask you, have you seen this before?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and in your opinion, not only do we have the cash in the budget for next year, but cash flow going forward, do we have without an increase in rates? Can we support this?
Yes.
It's about $383,000.
So you're telling, if I just heard this correctly, you can do this and I'll raise my water and sewer bill, even though we raise a water bill every year anyways?
I'm telling you that one of the most critical things that 17,000-plus people expect the city of Mount Vernon to do is provide clean drinking water and the ability to flush it out.
Don't disagree.
And right now, the most sustainable thing for us to do is to cover just the redundancy and reduce the liability that's going on within our water department and our wastewater department. We've been running a skeleton crew, this man right here has worked over 400, is that right, 400 overtime hours?
Covering the hours, the required hours at the wastewater treatment plant.
Because right now, we do not have a system in place that allows us to meet the EPA guidelines to handle both of these water plants, water and wastewater.
So.
So to answer your, to answer your question, in the future, between the rising costs of chemicals, the rising costs of operations, the rising costs of labor, I don't know if we will have to raise rates for water and wastewater, that is a separate conversation that luckily, you, Mike, won't have to make, but we will have...
I can pull every one of these people.
Sure. But I will say this, when it comes to this particular, because these are the hard decisions to make in council, we have, we collectively, because I sat where you sat, we have kicked the can down the road on several things and if, there's a famous saying that if you want to be popular, sell ice cream, don't serve in local government, right? But we're going to have to address hard things coming up. There are three, conservatively, there are going to be 3,000 new people moving into Mount Vernon within the next two to five years. There are going to be more jobs and there's going to be more expected of the city government. This is the way forward for sustainability is to have a workflow in process and to have a system that won't, when you Google Mount Vernon, we won't end up like Flint, we won't end up like Jackson, Missouri, we won't end up like any other community that has a calamity situation with its water department. We have to have a sustainable system that creates redundancies and reduces liabilities.
Can I get an answer to the question of when I asked for the way it was, the way it currently is and your proposed, why we're only getting the proposed?
Well, I mean, we can give you the way that it currently is.
It's here.
It's here, it doesn't have those.
Also, we're going to save money on overtime at the plants because each position will be a certified operator that can run the plant, we will hire from within and move these up. We're going to save money on consulting because we won't have to hire consultants to do our asset management plan, our emergency response plan. We can turn this around to our employees, make them, give, invest in our employees, give them a share of this, make them feel like they're part of something.
So, sorry, can I ask how much would you spend per day on consultants that these positions would cover instead? Does anybody have that information? Maybe not per day, can we ballpark figure it?
Well, we spend, I spend millions of dollars on construction and engineering companies for the utility. I mean, let's use this, let's use this asset management plan. EPA flipped a switch and says we need it right now and we went down to the water plant, everything's on paper, it's pencil, pencil-written logs. We had like two months to get it done because we didn't get it to council right away and so we hired a consulting firm, we did the asset management plan. Well, the EPA requires that to be updated every five years. So we had a period of time with transitory directors, so Aaron and I get together, guess what? That plan is dated 2016. The people that worked on it, that company, those, all those folks have quit, they don't work there anymore, so if we could go back to the same company, we're starting over from scratch because those employees aren't at that comp, every single one of the folks that worked on that plan doesn't work for that consulting firm. We had Emily working on the mandatory watershed protection map, she got started on that. Keith Burley is one of our volunteers for the utility commission, helped with that, then we got her involved in the court cases and other things, she never finished that. She's got a new job and she doesn't work for the city, so the, you know, we're designing, I don't know, I just look at Terry, if we look at our expense reports, we have a lot of, you know, a lot of work. And we, in the old days, if there was an emergency at the water plant or wastewater plant, we couldn't take the distribution and collection crew in there because it was a union violation, so. Couple different Christmases, I've done emergency repairs where I had to bring emergency contractors into the wastewater plant to fix broken pipes and the crews that work for the city because of the union weren't allowed to go in there. Now fortunately, we've done a lot of, Mayor Starr, we've done a lot of modernization. You know, Aaron was able to make all kinds of repairs to the water plant that we didn't need consultants because he did it, he managed his own crews. And so I don't have an exact number, but we spend in the millions of dollars for consultants. The other thing is, we're starting, we have taken everyone that we could get in the truck to training on how to install water line. So we're going to be using our distribution and collection crew to replace water line. If we have contractors come here, we have to pay state or federal prevailing wages, which are higher than our city union wages, so, and then they, we guarantee them by law at least a 10% profit. So if, in these cases where we can do work ourselves, you're not paying profit, you're not paying bond, you're not paying for their outside insurance and the prevailing wage.
So it's significant. And second question, the asset inventory, would this help us avoid projects like the very costly one that I don't remember what it was called that you and I toured where the maintenance needed to be rotating? So would that be put into a maintenance plan through?
Yes, so right now, we, the EPA does not mandate that at the wastewater plant. We had an emergency at the wastewater plant when the lid crashed into the screen and we were trying to divert the sewage flow. Well, it turns out several of these valves had not been turned in 19 years. If it was at the water plant, it's mandated that those valves get turned. Now, we haven't been doing that because we haven't been having the right people there, but, so the idea is, these type of things should not be the director or the engineer out there turning these valves. So the staff should have a program, there should be a system to maintain these, and slowly by slowly, piece by piece, the EPA is mandating that. And some people say that's unfunded mandates, but our, back to Tanner's comment, it, we are required to collect the money to meet the EPA mandates from the users, that's our duty, not to ask the EPA for money to turn valves and maintain things that we should be doing that makes sense.
The lead line inventory.
Yeah, the, the lead line inventory, we, we have two meter people and...
I'm almost out of time, Brian, can I get him to ask this question?
Two meter people, it's a mandate, we have hired interns, you know, we're trying to work together with my staff and Aaron's staff to make this happen, but then there's a lot of meter work that's falling beside the way because we have to have this done. What's the date?
October 24.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you, I appreciate the information. We, and you alluded to, but I don't know that you specified the fact that we're, we have a, we don't have redundancy, but not, I mean, we literally have no redundancy at the wastewater plant, right? So if, if, if Mr. Reinhardt is critically ill for a week, we have no one to run the wastewater plant, is that correct? I think that's important to, for public to understand, is there's literally no one to run the wastewater plant. And there is, that is quantifiable, if we have to bring in someone from outside to run our wastewater plant, that's, someone told me, gave me a number on that at some point, that was significant.
We, we have looked at anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 a month and we have currently been looking, we have the position created for an AD at the wastewater plant and we've been looking to replace that individual for at least six months.
I can also add to it, I would not look at this as a doom and gloom because one of the parts of the restructuring that has happened, if you see your expense report and your, your revenue report, the utility collections capacity fees are up well over 300% at both the wastewater and the water departments. And we only changed that, when did the rates change, the capacity fee? June, maybe?
About February.
Okay, well, February, so it's been a partial year where we've been actually, so we're trying to generate, without raising rates, it's driven by growth and so that can help keep the costs down per user and that's part of the, that's part of the way that you manage the growth. Now, because we have capacity fees, the capacity fees that are modern and current and reflective of the value that we provide, the current users are not subsidizing the additional work that needs to happen, so we're generating the revenue to help, to help pay for this.
And we're creating more users, that's another important thing. We're in the water business, so the more that we bring on, the lower that you, you lower that need to raise rates, right?
Yeah. And Tanner and Mike requested that we...
Preventative maintenance is very important and, and, and what we're doing is, it kind of reminds me back 20 years ago when we hired an extra person for each shift of the fire department, we saved in overtime. We, we saved money in overtime, so there, we have to look at the cost savings here and we, and preventive maintenance and, and making sure this job's done. Don't like spending that much money, but, but it's the cost of doing business.
And we're generating the revenue to get there.
And if I may add also, we have Brad Cook over in distribution and collections who's presented a slew of opportunities for us to modernize the way that we do those collections and make it more, make it easier for folks to, you know, pay and make that painless. So we're doing everything we can to modernize this and we need to do our part and make sure that we have it, you know, build in those redundancies and reduce that liability, so we're providing the best service that we can.
What's your intention for today?
So here, I want to voice my opinion here first because I'm, I think I'm the only one up here that feels this way, I'm, I'm struggling with the fact we are literally days away from having the discussion for budget for next year. And this was brought to us knowing at the most it could get two readings and we discussed it for exactly 22 and a half minutes, and this is a lot of money to commit over 22 and a half minutes.
So what I would say is that this is built into the 24 budget and we are creating these positions so we can start moving people up and then I can start creating, because it is a months-long process with the civil service process, to create these technician positions, these operations and maintenance technicians. So we want to start moving this process along, that way I don't bring this back in January for the same information, just to push us back another two months.
And I would feel confident in that if I hadn't just been handed a bunch of amendments to...
In support of what you're saying, the only person that's not sitting here right now listening to this is, is going to be replaced is me. I don't, I agree. We have, you have a budget hearing, budget meeting, two weeks into January, you can come back, it's not, it doesn't have to take two to three months. I don't know how you could pass something of this magnitude without looking at your whole budget, for the whole department, you're going to have a sewer, storm sewer increase coming up too, I guarantee you, we just hit the last of three years on that. So I'd like to have you guys at least hear the whole picture. It puts it back, it puts it back two weeks, I, it, I just kind of...
If I can disagree, it puts this legislation back two weeks, it puts this process back months.
Why did it come to us so late before the budget? I don't know.
Like, I think what you have to understand is, this is in parallel, we have been working on the budget for months and we have run multiple scenarios, you know, this is, this is Aaron's, really his first budget and so we have analyzed this, there's been a lot of scenarios, we can ask Mr. Scott to step up, you know, the budget has been vetted by him, the other thing to point out is, this is a total, well, as, as Tanner said, these people will not be on the books on January 2nd. So when you look at that total number, we're not going to see that level of expense in '24. It might be halfway through the year before we have the top level in, then that's going to potentially create vacancies and then we're going to be hiring entry-level people. I mean, the, the challenge is...
We've been searching for the AD of the wastewater plant for six months. Giving us the ability to start this process now just speeds this along. And we need these redundancies, we need to reduce this liability as soon as we can.
And we've only had one applicant. And we offered to adopt two and he turned it down.
Because he can find better compensation elsewhere.
The other thing to be serious about is we have been understaffed. The mayor personally went to the EPA and begged forgiveness when we did not have a class three operator. We have been under the good graces of the EPA. And that is on borrowed time.
And, and frankly, to turn it down because we need one more reading is not good enough.
Well, Mrs. Wood, the time is up and you will have some time during the session if you, if you take it to a third reading to have more discussion. Otherwise, otherwise it will die, sin I die. So it's up to you at that, at that point. But we need to, need to adjourn. So we have a recess. We're going to adjourn the employee and community relations. We're now in recess until 7:30 PM. We begin the legislative portion of the meeting. 31 PM, we've got, again, a legislative portion of the December 27th Mount Vernon City Council meeting. Call to order. Mr. Hill, please call and roll.
Mrs. Woods.
Here.
Mr. Ruckman.
Here.
Ms. Keener.
Here.
Mr. Hillier.
Here.
Mrs. Seville.
Here.
Mr. Severance.
Here.
Mr. Mayhem.
Here.
Can someone volunteer to say the invocation?
Sure.
Okay. The invocation this evening will be given by Mr. Severance. Please rise to the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Father, thank you for this great country that we live in. Thank you for this great city. There are a lot of good people here that are working to make our community better. So I appreciate each person up here behind these desks tonight and the work that they do and those in the audience as well. Lord, thank you for all of our service members, men and women, that work to our, serve our city and our treatment plants and our streets, our firemen, our police protection people. And I just thank you for each one of them. I pray that as we end this year and we go into a new year in 2024, that you will bless our city, that you will keep our people safe, and that you will guide the people up here that are making a lot of big decisions. Lord, to do, give us, give us your wisdom to make this city a better place. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I am the president of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Severance. Counsel, in your packets were the minutes from the December 11th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Now I'd ask for a motion for approval.
So move, second?
They moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. They are approved. Aye. Mr. Hill, any petitions or communications?
There are none.
And counsel, in your, in your packet were the committee reports. I see no liquor control licenses. I will now turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This time I would like to make a special presentation. Just wanted to recognize Councilman Hillier for 16 years of service to city council. And then as our way of showing our appreciation to Mr. Hillier for his years of service, we have one of the flags that have been retired that flew over the streets of Mount Vernon. And we had a honor guard ceremony today where it was folded by our police and fire department. And so, Mr. Hillier, we would like to say on behalf of the city, thank you for your years of service. If you would come forward, we'll do the.
Thank you so much for your service, Mike. You worked hard. Now we have a person speaking on matters of city concern. And the first one is Don Carr. Don, please come up and set your name and address and limit your comments to four minutes.
Don Carr, for Upland Terrace. Good evening, Mr. Hawkins and council members. As I was writing this, I found it very difficult to put almost 20 years of service into a four-minute speech. So I hope you'll bear with me. I have probably over 20 or 30 seconds. I've noticed over the years that when a city council member leaves office, for any reason, including retirement, that there is not much fanfare given. Tonight, the exception. I am here tonight to pay homage to Mike Hillier, who, when he leaves the legislative chambers within an hour, he will be known as former city council member who honorably represented the fourth ward for the last two and a half years. I will probably make Mike a little bit uncomfortable by talking about his accomplishments. So I apologize to you in advance, Mike. Notwithstanding those colleagues present here tonight, Mike served, served next to the likes of Susan Carl, John Booth, Nancy Vale, John Francis, John Fair, and Chuck Dice. Best that I can determine, his first known city connection started around 2004 with the appointment by Mayor Mavis to serve as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals. That volunteer beginnings was followed by five consecutive terms in office as an at-large city council member totaling 10 years and representing the residents of the fourth ward for the last five years. During the 15-plus years on city council, Mike served as chairman of the Fire, Police, Civil Defense Committee, chairman of the Finance Budget Committee, chairman of the Planning and Zoning Committee from 2020 to present. He represented the city on the Knox County Regional Planning Commission and the Board of Directors of the Heritage Center Association of Mount Vernon. He was able to keep a well-grounded, to the concerns of the public. He had a direct conduit, heard their voices loud and clear while working at his full-time job at Backmail. When asked in October of 2021 by a news reporter, why are you running for city council? His reply was, I'm running for city council, fourth ward, for the same reason I ran for city council in 2005. At that time, I wanted to be a voice of my neighbors and the residents of Mount Vernon. I want to be part of the planning for the future of Mount Vernon, sensible planning with the taxpayers in mind. When asked about the city budget, he was quoted as saying, "I have never agreed to a major spending project for our city without questioning first where the funding is coming from to finance the project." How many times during city council discussion on a new project did we see Mike look toward the direction of Terry Scott and ask, Mr. Scott, do we have the money to do this? Other issues high on Mike's priority list over the years were his passion that he had for the restoration and the maintenance of our coveted brick streets. He also showed concern for the appearance of the city and particularly unsightly abandoned properties. He also showed concern over the issue of commercial traffic driving off state highways and through our residential areas. He was also vocal about the inability of our current road system to handle the increase in traffic caused by the approval of new large housing developments. I'm not sure that 15 years serving on city council breaks any kind of Mount Vernon record, but I know the citizens of Mount Vernon will miss Mr. Hillier sitting in that dais. Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Michael Paul Hillier, for your years of dedicated service to the residents of Mount Vernon.
Thank you. Well said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Thank you, Mike. Now we have Jim Brown from the Trade Tree and Beautification Commission giving an update.
Good evening. I am Dr. James Brown, Chair of the Shade Tree Commission. I come every year and talk to you guys about all the fun stuff we've been doing. And then when I tried to get on the, the committee meeting, we didn't have a committee meeting. Said you can come and talk during the public section. But I didn't realize it was only going to be four minutes. So.
Well, this is an update. You can have, you can go five or six.
I can go five or six. All right. I might be able to get it all done now. We, we haven't been near as successful as the police department with our grant applications. We've applied for quite a few and have gotten beaten down. And actually, there's legislation, I think tonight, we're going to try for another one. This will be the west end from West High Street South. It'll be a large area. We originally thought it was north and it just, tonight I found out it's south. So we've got a big area, includes both of our, our big industrial park and some other areas. Anyway, we, when, one of the grants we applied for last year was, it was called a canopy restoration grant. So what we did is the stormwater in the city did a massive project along the riverbank to clean up the invasives, get the, get the bank in, in usable condition or more serviceable condition. But when you got on top of the bank, and we're in the Aerial Foundation Park now, and went south towards where the pavilions are, we were overgrown with honeysuckle and autumn olive. Some of the autumn olive plant bushes had trunks, you know, 18 inches in diameter with 15 or 20 two-inch sprouts coming out of them. And it was just a, an overgrown mess. So that was, our original grant was to go in and clean that up and plant some trees. Well, we didn't get the grant, but we thought, you know, this is, this is a waste. We got to do something with it. And the Aerial Foundation stepped up and the Stormwater Utility stepped up with some dollars and the Shade Tree Commission has some money in that too. And we rented agriculture ahead and went in there and just ground it up. That thing will grind up a tree. It's amazing to watch it work. It just, just flattened whole area, cleaned it all up to get the trees started. And we have 68 trees going in there. They're working on them yesterday. They're hoping to be done here in the next couple of days. There was some on and off because, one of the fun things about this is the city works on a budget, you know, January to December. The Aerial Foundation works on their budget, you know, mid-year to mid-year. And Wade and Gatton Nursery works on about 18 to 20-month timeframe and all that because of weather and all the other things goes on. So we have a lot of overlap in projects that take longer. Part of that was, we were going to also do a three-year invasion control program with Scott Zimmerman with complete care maintenance. He's certified in pesticides and herbicide. So we're knocking out the poison ivy, we're knocking out the golden rod. We're keeping the milk, the autumn olive, the honeysuckle, all that, keeping it down. And I, I said, mistakenly said, milkweed. If you recall, the last few years, I talked about, we were buying starts from the University of Kansas, the Save the Monarch program. And we were planting monarch, we were planting milkweeds. And we were getting kind of mixed results, but we were getting somewhere. We went in and cleaned that out. This year, we had a humongous milkweed crop. It was amazing how many we had. So I went out and harvested seeds. I harvested three one-gallon bags of seeds. And spread one of them, I got one of my garage that I'm going to spread here soon. And the other one, we spread out in West Aerial. So that, that whole project has really turned into something nice. In the next few years, that'll really be an asset to the area. Another thing that we started, the American chestnut tree, you know, was killed by the blight in the early 1900s. Over the years, they've been working to, to modify the tree to get some, get it to be blight resistant. So I got ahold of our ODNR rep and said, hey, I want, you know, you guys have, the state's been planting some trees. We want some trees. And they said, oh, no, well, we'll give you some resources. Well, the best resource I found, I could buy three seeds for $390. And I was like, well, that's, you know, that's not a lie. Can't do something like that. So kind of forgot about it. Then we went to the Tree City banquet in Grove City. And he said, hey, how's your chestnut program going? So I explained to him what I'd run into, the problems we found. He said, oh, that's interesting. And a couple of weeks later, he called and said, I can get you some chestnut trees. They would be saplings. And I was like, great, you know, give me a couple of weeks, we'll work on where we can get these things done. So we kind of got together with Parks Department, figured out a place we could plant them, did a few things. He called like two days later and said, I got the trees. They're out of storage, they need to get planted. So over the course of three days, we got 98 chestnut trees planted. And it's just west of the old football stadium there, behind the U-Haul. Cleared up a plot there, planted them, cages around them, buckets with holes in them so we could water them. And we managed to get 58 of them to survive the year. So they felt that was very acceptable. We were a little disappointed. But turns out the, the. But turns out, the variety we got is called 1516. It's a blend of American chestnut and Chinese chestnut, and they found that, they thought it was going to be really great, but it's not doing as well. But hey, we've got some growing, and we're going to go from there. Then, they came up with this new genetically-modified version called Darling 58, which everybody was real hot on. The federal government has to, you know, everything has to get blessed because we're sending a genetically-modified, you know, into the biosphere, into our environment. So, it's going through a lot of government regulations, a lot of things with that. Well, now, I just read that its performance has been worse than the 1560. So, the American Chestnut Society pulled their support for it, so that won't be happening. But we're still working on chestnuts. I'm sorry to be rambling on. But anyway, we did Arbor Day this year at Twin Oaks Elementary School. We actually put four or three oak trees in. Imagine that in Twin Oaks. They had some pine trees, and, you know, I've been doing this since 2009. I still don't know trees that well. It's amazing. But I'm getting better. We had some pine trees in there that got the, they had the needle drop and weren't doing well, so we got those removed, and we planted three trees. And in our conversation with them, if you drive up the hill there, you'll see there's about an acre in front of the campus that's just half-dead, overgrown, nasty, gnarly-looking stuff. And it's like, "Hey, something could happen there." Brian got involved in it, and we're going to turn it into an education area. The students are going to work on a design. We're going to vote on it, and we're going to turn that into an education area. We'll be planting specimens in there, different things, where they can go in and monitor the tree growth over the years and make it part of their education. So, that should be coming up here in the next, within the next year, I think. We'll see how well it goes. All these things take time. We'll get there. We did an arboretum a few years back, and it is really coming along nicely. So, we had the opportunity to get 25 quaking aspen. Quaking aspen, they're called that because the leaves kind of shimmer, they turn bright yellow in the fall. They're really nice trees, and they tend to grow in groves. So, we got 25 of those. They were all about 18 inches tall or so. But we wound up with a brownie, and, oh, there were brownies and daisies. So, these were, you know, little girls. 25 of them showed up. They all got a tree and got them planted. Everybody planted a tree. We got a picture with all the girls standing by their trees, so that's kind of cool. They also got fences around them and watered through the year. They were doing very, very well until later in the fall, the deer got to them. So, next year, we're going to be building bigger fences and doing some things to protect those. But it'll be fun to have a nice grove of aspen up in there. We finished what we called the Gateway Project. That was the high school, the athletic complex. We planted some more pines, and again, I don't, I'm bad on names, but pines on the north side where the air conditioning units are on the back of the athletic complex, planted a bunch of pines in there to kind of hide that, make that local feel better. And we, the Career Center, the Building Trades Class, got the picnic tables in. So, if you look, there's a row of picnic tables between the Nazarene property and the high school property. It used to be an old overgrown fence row, and now we've got some nice trees growing in there. We've got some new starts going on. And we put in six picnic tables so that teams could have meetings, parents, grandparents would have a place to sit. So, we'll see how that gets along over the years. How am I doing?
About out of time. Go ahead.
I've only got two more pages.
You have a passion for this, Dr. Brown. We understand that.
You know what? And I've got a good group that I work with. It really helps. And one thing that I talked with, and you guys were all talking about infrastructure and that, you know, trees, we're big on that. The interest, you know, we're a big part of the infrastructure and controlling our growth. And a project I talked with Lacy about today, and I've talked with Brian before, is our zoning, our ordinances really don't let us have a lot of control. The apartment complex on Gilcrest Road was not a subdivision. They kindly ask us for a list of desirable and undesirable trees, but they can do whatever they want in there. So, I'm working with Lacy. I'm going to get her some examples, and we're going to see if we can get our ordinances a little so we can control, I shouldn't say control growth, but we need trees. We have humongous parking lots all over town that are just humongous heat islands, and they're not getting any better over the years with the climate change in the way it is. We need to do a little better, so we'll be working towards changing some of that. Okay, we did get the arch, and we, you know, the arch is on our pocket parks. We did a couple more of them last year. We did one for Riverside Park. It actually got installed. The Career Center, Building Trades Class, got the pad port and got that installed. It's right at the end of Sugar Street, right by the fire hydrant there, and that will work in real well with our splash pad and the library annex. Yeah, it came to me. It's just, it's there. We also made one for Arch Avenue Park, but we have to put that on hold right now because the utilities are changing through there, so we'll see what goes on with that. It's actually being stored right now, but it is ready whenever we can get that in. With the splash pad and the annex, there are pine, they're humongous pine trees sitting in there. They will have to be removed. Those pine trees are larch trees, and it's spelled L-A-R-C-H. And Brian Wade, Wade and Gatton, our nurseryman, his great-grandfather planted those trees. So, they've been there a long darn time. So, I hadn't had a chance to talk with you yet, but when we did the square and removed some of those historic trees there, they were able to do an art project. I think that's something maybe we could talk about and get something like that happening again with that. It'd be a shame just to have that wind up in the shredder.
Absolutely.
So, we'll see where that one goes. We did a burn in the West Aerial Foundation Park Pollinator Area, and it burned, did real well at burning off the things we needed to burn, but we have a humongous crop of goldenrod in there that it didn't touch, so we'll be working on getting goldenrod out of there. It's a native plant, but it's kind of invasive for us in that area. So, this year, our TCP program, the Tree City Partner, where we provide the tree to the community, the homeowners water the trees. We have 80 trees going in that program. We targeted the Seiko Road area. We got almost 40 in that, and the rest of them are just around the community. Through our grant program and our money from you, that you guys provide for us, we'll be working, Dan Emmett Park has trees, Board of Education's getting trees, the Nazarene University Ball Field there on Newark Road, you'll see those are in already. We're doing Dog Shelter, the Humane Society, Mount Vernon Avenue, there at Memorial Park, we'll be doing some in there. The Division Street, Martinsburg Road area, including the new church, we'll be planting trees in through there, replacing some of the river birch on Riverside Park and in the old Park and Ride area, the fire station. I have plans to plant a bunch of trees in High Watha Park this year. The Landscape Class is going to do that. We think about February, March, depending on their calendar and how we get things worked out there. And then, a bunch of just replacements, when you have trees that get damaged, die out. So, we're looking at about 289 trees just in that portion. Some statistics here real quick. In the last 10 years, we've planted over 4,525 trees. This year, we removed 130 trees, dead, dying, hazardous, in the way of construction. We pruned over 630 trees and fertilized many, many more. So, we really did well with that. And then, one of the things that Tanner started, and then he left when he came into city council, you know, he comes in and brings up all these good plans and ideas, and then he walks away.
You bet it.
It was the Bee City. We actually, our Bee City, we managed to get our certification of that. You'll see the signs went up around the community, all the entrances of the community. The Bee City has been very active. It's a little subgroup. Jason Bennett's the head side up. Quentin Platt, our assistant engineer, is very active with that group, too. So, he's our liaison, how we're managing that. You'll see them the last two years, and you'll see them again this year in First Fridays. They've got a little stand. They hand out seeds. They do a lot of community interaction. It's really been a good program for them doing that. Then, the area at the bend, West High Street and 229, we had that big area in there. He went in, cleaned that out. There was tons of autumn olive in there and honeysuckle and just a bunch of invasive cruddy junk. They've actually gone in there and cleaned that up, and then, in an effort to keep the invasive stuff down, he gave me a list of all the things that have been planted in there. They have planted, wrong page. Here's the list. They planted 600 red buds, red oak trees, swamp white oak trees, raspberries, elderberries, pawpaws, flowering dogwoods. The list goes on and on, along with a lot of other flowers. The vast majority of everything that got planted in there was donated. They were able to get it donated. We didn't have any cost with that. So, that was a great thing. And then, they also got a grant from Project Wingspan, which gave us some native seed plugs that we put in out in the pollinator area. We were out there one day planting those. And then, this fall, the 10-acre pollinator area, we reseeded again. The Aerial Foundation Conservancy put up money for seed, and we went out and spread seed, and then we used the seeds that we'd collected. They'd gone out and collected seeds from the plants that were there. We used some of the milkweed I collected, and we reseeded that. So, we have to work on getting the goldenrod out of there. We're working on the area. So, you know, I always say, "Hey, remember me at budget time." What would it be me saying it? But do you have any questions, anything?
I have a concern about poison hemlock. And is there anything we're doing, because that could be, that could injure people.
Yes.
Especially young people. And what about poison hemlock? Were we doing anything with that?
Yeah, so I'll jump in on that. So, Scott Zimmerman, who's part of this maintenance contract, he has his pesticide license, so we have been doing war on the river corridor. We've, the area between the Nazarene and the high school, and then in the industrial park, we've targeted zones to do poison hemlock elimination. And Doc can add to that.
Oh, I can? Okay. All right. Well, he had a, it's a poster about this big of all the invasive and weedy things. And Amber looked at it, and she said, "Oh, some of these things are homeopathic. We can eat these. These are..."
Not hemlock.
Not hemlock, but some of them. So, but that's part of that, when I said we had, we'd started a three-year program this last year, it was our first year. We have two more years of invasive control, and that's with Scott doing those things. He has hours every month. He's out in the parks, around the street, around the community, taking care of invasives. We have poison ivy growing in a tree somewhere, or grapevines growing. He's out taking care of that, too. So, it's all...
Thank you. Any other questions? Appreciate your time, Dr. Brown.
I'm going to say one more thing. The lantern fly is coming, okay? The lantern fly is a very invasive species. It was in Toledo, Cleveland earlier. Now, it's in Columbus. It's going to be here. You'll see some flyers in the water bill. We're going to get them out. It's a, you see it kill it kind of a bug. Thank you very much for letting me have your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, in your packet of the agenda for tonight, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda that you received? If not, I'll assume it's approved by consensus. And just a reminder, this is our final meeting for this council. So, if it doesn't receive a suspension of the rules, we have no readings for third reading. So, any reading, any resolution or tonight, or ordinance that doesn't receive a suspension of the rules will die. Sign A Die. Sign A Die. For my old high school, that means without day, which means there will be, there is no day except for a future meeting, which means that any legislation that's not passed tonight will die and need to be brought up again in our, with our new council starting in January. So, I'll assume this is approved by consensus, and we'll move then to resolutions for second reading. The first one is Resolution 2023-104.
Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-104, a resolution in support of the Kokosing Gap Trail and Knox County Park District in their application for an Ohio Department of Transportation ODOT Transportation Alternative Program grant to assist with the cost of repaving the Kokosing Gap Trail and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rule and take Resolution 2023-104 to its third and final reading.
Second.
And move to second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension?
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt Resolution 2023-104.
Second.
And move to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Keener.
I think this one's really straightforward.
I do sit on the Knox County Parks Board, and I deal a lot with the Kokosing Gap Trail, and very excited about this, and hope this application goes through. And that's important because that brings a lot of tourism, and we are known throughout this area for our trails, all the way through this county.
The trail is huge for downtown, specifically in Mount Vernon and for other communities in Knox County. And if you have been out on the trail, there are some sections that really need some repairs.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Second resolution, or second reading is Resolution 2023-105. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-105, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director of the City of Mount Vernon, Ohio to enter into contract with Road to Finish LC and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severns.
Yes, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings and take Resolution 2023-105 to its third and final reading.
Seconded.
And move to second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension?
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Severns.
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-105.
Seconded.
And move to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severns.
Yes. Tanner, please.
Thank you, Mr. Severns. Invite Mr. Ball back up. So...
All right. So, we have this company helping us out again with the Buckeye Edition project, which is a federal project and requires a lot of scrutiny to make sure we're meeting all the standards on U.S. Steel. We've been very satisfied with their keeping track of a contractor we've never worked with before, and we've received several, you know, thanks from the folks in that neighborhood on the cleanliness of the job site and the attention of all the staff. So, we have reached out to some other companies. There's a lot of shortage right now, so this company's available, and they're willing to, basically, when we finish the Buckeye Edition, move over and help us keep our, like we've talked about, keep our developers, keep a watchful eye on them, and make sure the city's receiving high-quality underground and above-ground infrastructure. Questions? This would be, we would, you know, this would be sort of a continuing contract, so if this goes well, we would have the option to extend them for up to two additional years, including 2024.
Couple of questions. We don't have to bid this out, then?
You don't have to. We could. We don't have to.
Because it's under a number? Is that what the deal? Why we don't have to bid it?
No, it's be a sole-source selection.
And then, this budget, is it saving us money? What do we, what's the budget on this?
Well, so when we say, you know, we are, again, when Tom Hinkle took over, most all the catch basins in the country club were in failure. The catch basins in the Landing Subdivision were in failure, and we spent hundreds of hours rebuilding those. So, you know, we're going with a small business that has low overhead. And so, we're, you know, we're getting a person, a skilled person that has ODOT experience for $125 an hour. So, that's, it's a higher price than we would pay for in-house person. But the idea is, this development boom is temporary. So, we don't want to bring, I don't want to bring you a permanent construction person to add to my office when we feel like this is a three-year boom.
Is this $100,000 a year, just to...
Yeah, let me, hang on a second.
You don't have to.
Just 10 seconds here. So, if we were to take the 125 times 2,080 hours, so if they were to work 40 hours a week, at the 125 an hour, it would be a $260,000 contract. Likely, we're not going to work every day, every working day of next year. That's the neat thing about a consulting service, is we can, we're flexible with that.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Now, I move to resolutions for first reading. The first one is Resolution 2023-106. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-106, a resolution confirming the mayor's appointments of Jesse Buzenberg to the Utilities Commission for the City of Mount Vernon for a two-year term, and of Gordon Gant as an alternative, as an alternate member to the Utilities Commission for the City of Mount Vernon for a two-year term and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution 2023-106 to its third and final reading.
Second. And move it second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension?
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Rule is suspended. Mrs. Woods.
Move to adopt Resolution 2023-106.
Second.
And move it second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Woods.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair and counsel. Jesse Buzenberg, we, has been an alternate member with the Utilities Commission, but until the recent resignation of Mr. Mike Miller, our community member who will be joining you, will be replacing Mr. Hillier this coming year, turned his resignation in. Jesse said she would be happy to become the full voting member, which opened up her alternate seat. And Mr. Gordon Gant has agreed to be a part, be the alternate right now on the Utility Commission. And having citizen participation on the Utility Commission has been extremely helpful. And so, we're really excited about these two serving and continuing to help the city move forward with its utilities.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Now, it looks like it's time to do a little cleanup for the end of the year and on fiscal matters. So, the next one is Resolution number 2023-107.
Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-107, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution number 2023-107 to its third and final reading.
Second. And move it second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension?
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I move to adopt Resolution number 2023-107.
Second. And move it second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, looks like we're going to get a lot more money than what we were expecting.
Exactly.
Isn't that wonderful?
Always nice, isn't it?
It is.
I guess Christmas came soon.
It did.
Thank you, Mrs. Seville and counsel. This is the last of the supplemental appropriations, that's resources not being estimated at the beginning of the year or throughout the year. And we appreciate what's been going on in our community. Items one and two together is the police and fire department. They, these estimated resources have been exceeded. In this case, it's about $600,000, and we do, we'll need those for payroll-related expenditures between now and Friday, as a matter of fact. Item three, if we have estimated, again, we have exceeded estimated revenues in our EMS billing charges for the year. Folks who may not realize, but we did change our provider that does our EMS billing. And so, we are generating a significant amount of resources from that. Of course, with that also, there's expenditures that go, but still is doing very, very well for us, for our community as well. Items, let's see here. Item four for you, we've exceeded estimated revenues for wastewater service for the Clinton Township. I realize that Clinton Township has a fee that they assess to their users by their own board of directors. We have exceeded their estimated resources, and we'll be able to apply these and send those out this week to their, to their board of directors for the year end. Items five and six together, we've got, in the general fund, we've exceeded our general fund revenues significantly, almost to the amount of $1.5 million, has come in. So, we've got a couple of departments that we need to get funding for in there. And then on your seven, line seven, lodging excise tax, that has been very good for us as well in this, in our community, continues to show that we do have a lot of people coming either in or around or through our community. And that's always a good thing as well. My window of my office looks across to the hotel, it's across the street, and I can see that it's considerably busy all the time. Not to mention, while we're talking about this, you know, we do have a new hotel that's going to be coming in our community as well. So, we'll have additional resources that will come through for that as well. So, thank you, Mrs. Seville and counsel. Any other questions? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution 2023-108. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-108, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to transfer certain funds.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution number 2023-108 to its third and final reading.
Second. And move it second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension?
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
Move to adopt Resolution number 2023-108.
Second. And move it second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. Now, we're going to transfer some funds.
Thank you, Mrs. Seville and counsel. This is your transfers for, significantly, we're talking about payroll-related items, PERS contributions. We have those throughout several of our operational departments, where we need to get some of those reallocated as well. And beyond that, I think that covers pretty much what we have for this. Wrapping up, this, again, will be our last payroll coming off on Friday. So, this will help us get things wrapped up and taken care of. Thank you, Mrs. Seville, counsel. Any other questions? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Now, we move to the big one. We can't do anything next year unless we have a temporary appropriations. So, this is Resolution 2023-109. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-109, a resolution to make appropriations for current expenses and set a resolution that supplements the interim appropriations and other expenditures for the City of Mount Vernon, State of Ohio during fiscal year ending December 31, 2024.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution number 2023-109 to its third and final reading.
Second. And move it second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension?
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I move to adopt Resolution number 2023-109.
Second. And move it second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Scott, this is to keep the city running.
It does. Mrs. Seville and counsel, appreciate your support on these interim appropriations until we're able to have our meeting on the 20th of January, with which counsel and others will be figuring out the remaining portion. This will get the city operating for at least the next 30 days, the next 45 days. Grand total is 10,000, I'm sorry, 10 million. I was just seeing whether everybody was awake here. $10,754,280. This is about a $1.2 million increase over what we had in the previous 2023 interim appropriations. But we do, as you've heard already in several of your committee meetings or your conversations already, projects is what's driving, and we've got consultants. You heard from our engineer in regards to staff people, that we've got consultants working on a lot of projects for us. And so, that's what's driving up probably the largest portion of the difference between the two different years. So, counsel and Mrs. Seville, appreciate support, if you will, for operations of 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Yes. First I heard about the 20th. What time will that start?
I was just getting that on my calendar.
Yeah. We'll start, well, we'd like to start at about nine, but if you have some sweet treats that you want to come at 8:30, that probably would get you up and going.
Okay.
That's Mrs. Seville's call. When do you want to start?
8:30, if you want. The actual meeting starts at nine.
We'll try to get you done by noon.
Hopefully done by noon, yes.
Didn't tell her what day. Anybody have a conflict with that name?
I do. That's all right.
We need a referee, so that knocks that out.
Yes, sir.
Mr. DeHulius, I don't know where you hold your meeting, but Mr. DeHulius scheduled Council Chamber, City Hall, and several of the offices to do the assessment of the Sargent's test in the building on January 20.
Well, we'll see what we can work around on the schedule between either...
If council would be willing, we could move those meetings over to my training room.
Sure.
If that's possible.
We usually use the lower level of this building.
Is it safe over there?
We usually use the lower levels of this building. Mr. Hill, let me just make sure I suppose where it's going to be. Yeah. We'll get some of that worked out on that. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, use my conference room.
Sure. Any other questions on this big appropriation item? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
As adopted, the next resolution is Resolution 2023-110. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-110, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director of the City of Mount Vernon, Ohio to enter into a contract with Savannah Carmen and Christopher C. Carmen, DBA Angry Acres Farm LLC, to lease the property located at 51 Public Square and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severns.
Yes, I'd like to suspend the rules to require three separate readings and take Resolution 2023-110 to its third and final reading.
Seconded.
And move it second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension?
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Rule is suspended. Mr. Severns.
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution number 2023-110.
Seconded.
And move it second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severns.
Yes. Tanner, please.
Thank you, Mr. Severns. I'll invite Mr. Ball again. This is for the property located where the, at 51 Public Square. This is where the former law office was. And I'll let Mr. Ball take it away.
Yeah, we put up, you know, the property has been vacant, what has it been, almost a year?
Almost the other...
Almost a year.
In January, February of last year.
Yeah, they gave us notice and moved out. So, we have all the utilities shut off. We have RV inter freeze in all the faucets. We have to go in there and check on it. We've, you know, it's a bit annoying. So, we put a for rent sign on the door. We've had a couple applicants. We feel like they're the best. They are a small startup. They participate heavily in the farmer's market. They're working basically out of their house. And this is an opportunity to give them a temporary. They realize this is very temporary. They are waiving all of their relocation rights under the Federal Uniform Relocation Act, and they're agreeing to do all the maintenance, pay all the utilities, and pay a surcharge to participate in the use of the dumpster. And we've done...
So, what are they doing in there?
They'll, I think they're making sort of small food items and packaged stuff that they typically sell at farmer's markets. They're trying out, this is a trying out, a storefront, and it's a low risk for them, and we, and they know it's temporary. So, if it doesn't work, they're not...
So, is it the city's job to make sure their property licensed with all the different?
Yeah, they will have to have a health department license, and they know that.
I did notice when I was reading the contract, something didn't have to be handled now, which might look at. I heard you brought up the dumpster use again. I assume that's a monthly...
Yeah, they'll pay $50 a month.
So, when I read the contract, it said the first two months, you'd waive the rent fee due to the fact they're working on including the dumpster fee. If you read further down into the contract, it says after two months, the rental fee will be the 300 and some dollar number. You never added back in the dumpster fee to make the total number. Just something you might want to look at.
Yeah, we can, we can do, I mean, no one assigned...
Started off with the total of being, it was five something with the dumpster, and then went after remodeling it, and it said it was only three something.
Yeah. No, the dumpster text was added in. It was a late add.
You might want to check that.
Because the folks in that building don't have access to the dumpster. But as the residential tenants have moved out, we have dumpster capacity. Good point. We'll correct that. Other questions?
Any other questions?
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. The final resolution for this evening is Resolution number 2023-111. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-111, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to prepare and submit an application to Ohio Department of Natural Resources Urban Forestry Grant Program, federal grant ID 23-GD-11094200-363, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution 2023-111 to its third and final reading.
Second.
And move it second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension?
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Mrs. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
Rule suspended. Mrs. Keener?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-eleven.
Second.
They're moving second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Keener?
We had Dr. Brown come, and he talked about this grant a little bit. It will be down West High, south of town. Do you want to come back and talk a little bit about what you hope to plant there? How many trees you think you're going to get?
Oh, yeah.
Don't tell us the names of what kind.
Yeah, don't put me on the spot there. Yes, we intend to plant a lot of trees. This grant, there's provisions in it. It's part of the Infrastructure Act, so there, it's up to five hundred thousand dollars. And that area of town, we qualify as a disadvantaged area, so we get special treatment in that. There's provisions in there for education, so we have a plan to educate our city workers. We did it, gosh, it's probably been ten or more years ago. We had a program where they came in, and we kind of gave them, this is how you prune a tree, this is how you take care of this. So we're going to do a little education program with it. It'll be mainly planting trees. There'll be some tree removal only if we need to. There'll be some, I'm certain there'll be some pruning through that area. There's a lot of need in the area for trees. Right now, I don't have a good handle on it. We have, it starts in twenty twenty-five and goes to twenty twenty-eight, so we have a couple of years to do it. I wouldn't, I'll give you a ballpark. I, you know, based on what we've normally do, we normally plant around three hundred trees, give or take. I would assume that would double. We'd probably be closer to six hundred trees those two years, maybe more, depending on how things go and what we can manage, depending on our community input, well, I shouldn't say community, homeowners, you know, if it's part of the, where we give them a tree and they water it, as opposed to where we have to run it through our water, our water truck and get it through the route. So there's many things in there.
That's good, yeah.
Just planting trees, that's really what it's all about. It's about getting our canopy up, bringing up our canopy.
Thank you. I think that this also ties really well with the beautification that the Safety Service Director wants to do specifically on the entry corridors into Mount Vernon, so I really like this project.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. We now move on to ordinances. The first ordinance is for second reading. It's ordinance number twenty twenty-three days forty-five. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash forty-five, an ordinance fixing the number of hourly employees of the City of Mount Vernon in the Division of Water and Wastewater and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods?
Thank you, sir. We'll give this its second reading.
Mr. President, I would like to move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings and take this to its third and final reading.
Second.
They're moving second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension?
Why?
Seems to make good sense to me. We have the backing of the union. Mr. Scott says that we have the money there. There's no issue there. Our director says that it's his recommendation as well. I don't see what we gain by waiting another three sessions.
Was this planned during break?
Was what?
Was this a plan made during break?
Was what a plan made during break?
You taking this over?
I think that any council member is able to take ordinances and resolutions through, even if they-
They couldn't. I'm just curious how it came up so fast.
I don't think it is fast. This is the second reading for this, and as we've said, the previous Safety Service Director had worked towards having redundancies filled in these departments. I've toured both of these facilities, and I think that we are at a risk of spending a lot of extra taxpayer money by not filling these positions.
Does it bother anybody else that the information that was asked for was brought to this meeting, and we learned the cost minutes before we voted on this?
To follow up on that, did you get any phone calls about this prior to this?
No.
Any, any phone calls?
No.
I did, no.
Yeah, there were-
I'm sorry, she's the chair.
Yeah, I know. You said, did anyone?
No, I asked her if she got any, the chair that brings us to the floor.
No, I got, I got phone calls on this.
What was that? Turn it on.
The letter.
Would that email, would you like to read that email out loud? Would you like me to?
Well, the-
That has a letter type?
The issue on the floor.
Yeah, well, I would like, I would like to address it, because we've had this conversation going on, and I've reached out to everybody, and I've addressed, Mike, you had a concern about the union. You always have an issue.
I always have an issue?
You, you always want the issue about the budget addressed.
I always have an issue?
You always, you always look to Mr. Scott, and we made sure that that issue was addressed with Mr. Scott. We went to the Utilities Commission. We made sure that there was a citizen input on the Utilities Commission. That individual is the person that will be replacing you on city council. You have the support of the Utilities Commission. You have the support of the union. Mr. Scott has vetted this. It has proposed in the next budget. We are creating these positions and moving forward and allowing this government to eliminate these liabilities and create some redundancy. This is a critical piece of providing public service. That's what our citizens require.
Always have an issue. Thank you. Mrs. Woods, what is your degree in?
Accounting and finance. I have two.
You have questions still with this. Thank you.
Any other questions on the suspension, not on the resolution?
Yeah.
But on the suspension of the rules? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods?
No.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
No, based on chairwoman experience. Thank you.
Mrs. Seville?
Position. Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
By a vote of five to two, the rule is suspended. Mrs. Woods?
No.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
No, based on chairwoman experience. Thank you.
Mrs. Seville?
Position. Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
By a vote of five to two, the rule is suspended. Mrs. Woods?
Someone.
But if you do, somebody else can bring it back up.
I was going to say, I'm going to bring it back.
He doesn't have to.
He don't have to.
No, I didn't.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to accept the ordinance.
Second. They're moving second for the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-three days forty-five. Any discussion?
Yes. I am sorry, in this world, when we have a chairperson with the background that this chairperson has, that we doubt her knowledge. We, we say we throw it aside because of a few things we are told tonight. It's just another, let's wait till the last minute and throw it out and see what happens.
Mr. Hillier?
Wait, wait a minute. This, this is for council's discussion. We, if we want to ask for administration, we will ask, but, but it's council's discussion.
I would like to say that I highly value Councilmember Woods' opinion on every piece of legislation that comes forward, but at the end of the day, I have to trust that Mr. Scott has gone through this. I believe that he has worked hard to protect taxpayer money in multiple different ways, and we don't always see eye to eye, but I really do rely on him when making these difficult decisions. But at the end of the day, it is important that our toilets flush and that water that is clean comes out of the showerheads, so.
I don't disagree. We, we've been working on budgets for how long? June?
This year, yeah. Yeah, before I got here.
And it comes down to, as much as we push and push and push, so we can take things to the third reading without an emergency clause. I, I stop at Terry's office every meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So I back what Terry says. I don't think Terry was in on this earlier, but I don't like the way it's being done. When it's being done like this, I question it.
Any other discussion?
I, I will support this with a yes vote. I, I don't like getting some of this information just now, and I did meet with Mr. Sayers earlier to discuss this, so I was aware of it, because he sent an email, and I made an appointment and went in. But I also believe that the amount of overtime we're paying and Aaron working four hundred hours of overtime, that's not fair to him at all. So if we are going to, if we're basically paying a chunk of this three hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars, and I real, I don't think he makes overtime pay because he's in management, but other workers or contractors or whatever, we are paying a chunk of this money already. It would be good to know what that number is, but I still believe, and I'm generally a trusting person, if this is the best group of personnel that we need to run this plant and have redundancy, we do, we do owe it to the City of Mount Vernon, the residents, to have good water and good wastewater.
I don't disagree a bit.
I, I know you don't.
My point is, so you throw numbers out of overtime and all this, this could have been done, if this was so urgent, so urgent to save all this money, why'd we wait till the last meeting, second reading? I'm done.
I think partially, and I'll speak-
We've asked how many times this year to stop doing this?
Well, I'll, I'll speak possibly for Mr. Sayers. He's very new to the job, so if he and Aaron have just been able to get together in the last several weeks, you don't just do this overnight, and so it does take a little bit of time, and out of respect for him, he's just, he's new to the Safety Service position, so.
Just a clarification, my position, when Mr. Sayers wanted to talk, he can talk if council asks him to talk, but he can't, he can't just blurt out. So if you, if you have a question for him, you certainly can ask the administration.
I agree with Mel. He said exactly how I feel. I feel for Tammy, and, and, no, I meant, you know, I know what you're saying, but I did talk, Tanner did call me, he did tell me, and I did understand all that. Terry said the money's there, and I feel we're just putting off what's going to take place, so we're just delaying what's going to take place and turn everything back, and I think we need to just move on with it, and since I know, I don't like how it all happened. I feel very bad, and I don't like what took place, but since it's at the end of the year, and, you know, the situation of where it's at, that's why I said to go on. No, I don't like getting something at the last minute, and I don't want it to continue. But you're new, so we're giving you a pass, but we know you're not going to do that to us anymore, so, but that's the only reason why I went ahead, is because I felt we've got to, because hearing he's working four hundred hours, that's, we're going to make him sick, and we can't afford to have him sick. So that's why I feel that way.
I have a question. During, during the committee meetings, you discussed that there's going to be amendments, but no amendment was proposed. Is there amendments proposed to this, or is it as, as is written?
Is this a question for me?
He was reducing the amount. You were taking the amount down to eight.
Right. So on the, under wastewater, under wastewater plant, it says nine operations, nine operations and maintenance technicians. That should read eight. There should be an amendment to reduce that to eight.
Is anybody on council introducing that amendment?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We have an amendment to change it from nine to eight. Is that the amendment?
That is. Is that the only amendment, or can we wrap all this up in one?
Well, each one, each ordinance has one correction on it.
Once again, we should rush this through.
We have a motion and a second for an amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Say the amendment again. So, Mr. Hill, is it clear?
It's taking the nine operations and maintenance technicians to eight, under the wastewater plant.
Any discussion on changing the nine to eight and the operations managers?
I remember we did something like this not too long ago, and we changed the amendment because we were grabbing at the last minute, and do you remember they came back and says, oh, we found something else we need to change? This is exactly what we're running to now. We need to quit rushing it. You're going to pass it? I'm voting no.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods?
No.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
No.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
By a vote of five to two, the amendment is approved. Now we're back to the, the ordinance as amended. We're talking about ordinance twenty twenty-three days forty-five as amended, changing it from nine to eight. Discussion on the, on the ordinance as amended. No other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods?
No.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
My vote is no, with hoping some people sitting here, new or not, learn a lesson.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
By a vote of five to two, the ordinance as amended is adopted. Now I move to ordinance number twenty twenty-three days forty-six. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash forty-six, an ordinance to create the positions of Assistant Director of Utilities Water and Assistant Director of Utilities Maintenance in the Division of Water and Wastewater and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash forty-six to its third and final reading.
Second.
They're moving second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods?
No.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
No.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
By a vote of five to two, the rule is suspended. Mrs. Woods?
You've got to amend this one now, too.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash forty-six, and that is going to be amending the Assistant Director of Water Plant from seventy-two thousand five hundred to seventy-four thousand, and the, amending the Assistant Director of Maintenance from seventy-two thousand five hundred to sixty-five thousand.
Second.
They're moving second to amend this, this ordinance. Any discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, why? When was this decision made, and why weren't we notified?
I was handed a piece of paper tonight.
It was brought up in the last meeting that the numbers were going to need to be amended.
And it's still less than the total.
It's actually lower.
And those are-
Doesn't matter. Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods?
No.
Mr. Ruckman? Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
I support the chair, no.
Mrs. Sievel?
Yes.
Mr. Severns?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
By a vote of five to two, this ordinance is amended. Now, now we're back to the ordinance, vote on the ordinance as amended. Any discussion?
Well, did he, did he make a motion yet?
Mr. Hill?
No.
No, we, we have yet to have a motion.
We need to have a motion to, uh, to act on the, on the ordinance as amended.
Mr. President, I motion to accept the ordinance.
Second.
They moved a second that this ordinance be...
Adopted as amended.
Adopted as amended. Any discussion? Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
No.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
My vote is no. In the future, please have the ducks in order before they come. Thank you.
Mrs. Sievel?
Yes.
Mr. Severns?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted as amended. The final ordinance for this evening is for first reading. That's ordinance number 2023-47. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2023-47, an ordinance to amend Chapter 1175 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Mount Vernon regarding signs and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier? Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rule for three separate readings and take ordinance 2023-47 to its third and final reading, please.
Second.
They moved a second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
No.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Sievel?
Yes.
Mr. Severns?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
By a vote of six to one, the rule is suspended. Mr. Hillier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend ordinance 2023-47 to strike through declaring an emergency.
Second.
They moved a second to amend this ordinance to strike the, the words declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, a piece of this legis, the piece of legislation that can make such a big impact on neighborhoods should allow the neighbors to react. That's why I'm asking it for be struck through. Thank you.
Any others discussion on the amendment? Mr. Hill?
I, I have a question on discussion. Uh, could we have a comment from administration on the impact of striking an emergency? And I'm asking because I don't know.
Well, let me tell you what's going on here. The current, this is on temporary political signs and temporary political signs only. Currently, the legislation has it at a size that is smaller than other temporary signs. It is my legal opinion, as well as the opinion of our zoning consultant who's helping us rewrite the zoning code, that the provision as currently written is not legal. By moving it to the 16 square feet, which is the same size as every other temporary sign that anyone can put in their yard, um, it means that we will have a political sign or...
I think we're asking about the, um...
Would be, and, and I'll get there in just one moment. And so that we can, the reason that we have requested an emergency is that people are already, uh, that we're already seeing political signs for the upcoming March, uh, election. And that by leaving it with the emergency clause, it will allow the city, specifically the property maintenance enforcement officer on whose shoulders this falls, to begin to enforce that. If the, if council chooses to strike the emergency clause from this, um, we will have to wait, uh, 30 days, um, and we'll go from there. But that's the issue with the emergency clause.
And if I don't strike it, and this council passes, this legislation, as it is written, your neighbor could have a four-by-four half-sheet of plywood in their front yard with a light on it. They can't say a word about it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Does it limit it to just one sign?
And by the way, the legislation reads, um, political signs or posters concerning candidates for elective office, public issues, and similar matters. To me, it means more than just election signs. What's a public issue? Um, it's pretty broad.
No, this, this is ones that are decided by the public election. So like we have had in the fall, like issue one and issue two.
Call the question. Call the question takes two-thirds vote. So, Mr. Hillier's asked to call the question. Is there a second to calling the question?
Second.
Move it, move and seconded to call the question. Takes two-thirds vote to call the question. Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
So what are we calling the question on? The amendment?
Stop, stop discussion. It's time to move.
Well, on the amendment. On the amendment, yes. That's the calling the question.
Calling the question on the amendment. If you call the question by two-thirds vote, we can stop discussion.
Yes.
On it.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Sievel?
Yes.
Mr. Severns?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Question was called. We can now vote on the amendment. Any discussion, any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
No.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Sievel?
Yes.
Mr. Severns?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
By a vote of six to one, the amendment is approved and which strikes the emergency clause. Now we're back to the ordinance as amended with the striking of the emergency clause on, on ordinance number 2023-47. Mr. Hill?
Mr. Hillier? Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance 2023-47 as amended, please.
Second.
They moved a second that the ordinance be adopted as amended. Any discussion?
Mr. Boren, did I hear you say the way it was written before, six square feet was not legal?
That's correct.
Why?
Because it treats political signs, uh, different than other signs. The 16 square feet is the size for every other temporary sign in the code. And so what we're doing by adding the 16 square feet, that just, we're treating it like every other temporary sign.
Wouldn't it make more sense to change every other sign to six square feet so we don't have 16 square feet signs all over town?
And don't forget, that is a 16-square-foot sign. Somebody can put a, can put a light on both sides, big spotlight, at any angle, reflect in your fixture window, and leave up as long as they want to leave up.
No, it's actually...
Excuse me, according to our county prosecutor who brought it to this council, he said there was a, if I'm not mistaken, you can repeat how he said it, but there's a constitutional argument about how long a political sign can be left up, correct?
Uh, the, 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 the previous language limited it in regards to the, um, the distant, the time it was from the election. This, by treating it like every other sign, means that it's covered by those rules, um, about when and how they can be brought up. So it does not have the same restrictions that it had, but it, it can't be left up forever, no.
When you say it makes better sense to do what, um, Ms. Woods said, just change the other signs, if you look, if I talk my neighbors and I'm gonna go run for election again, and who knows, I might change my mind, um, and I go down Sugar Street, and I say, I got the money and the backing, and I know I have the votes on Sugar Street, what do you think that looks like going down Sugar Street? What do you think it looks like on Longitude Drive?
I would like it.
I say we need to look, change our other signs. If we have signs out there, and I, I think we need to dwell into this a little deeper. I think this needs to be voted down. We really need to do our homework on this before we tell anybody they can put a four-foot square foot sign in their, in their front yard.
Not just one.
So...
And not just one.
Clarification here then, on this vote. If we vote no, we do not pass this, it'll remain as it's currently written?
We will not, we will not enforce. We cannot enforce.
So we have one person right now with a sign out there that's four feet long and three feet wide, three feet high and four feet long. That's it. He's got another one that's been questioned about where it's at, is four by eight...
So right now, the, under current law, those are too large, correct?
We wouldn't cite him for it, no.
Okay. I, I still support not passing this. I agree.
I feel like, uh, Mr. Severns did a lot of work this year trying to get signs out of tree lawns, and this feels a bit like a 16-square-foot step back.
The, the, it still can't be in the tree lawn, it still can't be on city property.
Right.
But it still could line all of High Street. And the, the, I know that we shouldn't limit people's public speech, and if they want to put out 45 political signs, they can, but putting out 45 16-square-foot signs, light it up, we would have Christmas through March.
The, the lighting issue will likely get into questions of, um, especially in the evening about whether or not it's a distraction. And that's with any of the, um, signs. And so that, I think, is a bit of red herring. Um, I would agree that the 16-foot is, is large, but, you know, that's what you, that's what council has currently given to every other temporary sign. And to give Mr. B. Miller the ability to enforce something, that's decision was made. Now, if council doesn't want to do that, then we can come back at it later and decide if we want to go and scrap or want to change all the temporary signs. But that's the issue. The issue is, do we have something to enforce or nothing to enforce?
I think this needs to be discussed further before we bring something...
We just appointed Mr. Brown for beautifying our town with trees, and Alice put his eyes out. I have nothing further.
Any other discussion? We're now voting on ordinance 2023-47 as amended, and the amendment is to strike the emergency clause. Mr. Hill?
So with a vote of no, it all goes away regardless of the amendment or not?
Right.
Thank you.
Correct. That's a word, we've already voted on the amendment.
Yeah.
This is the voting as amended.
As amended, yes. This is...
Mr. Hill? Okay, um, Mrs. Woods?
No.
Mr. Ruckman?
No.
Ms. Keener?
No.
Mr. Hillier?
No.
Mrs. Sievel?
No.
Mr. Severns?
No.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes. I don't think we should have ordinances that we're not enforcing.
By a vote of six to one, this ordinance as amended is rejected.
Thank you. You guys are testing my proper tools of order skills. Yeah. Sheesh. I finally got it figured out after 16 years.
Remarked to the administration, Mayor. Mayor Starr.
Thank you, Mr. President and council. I just want to, as we, uh, end this, this, this year, uh, this session, uh, say how proud I am of our team, our, our workforce, our, our team members have done an extraordinary amount of work, uh, very dedicated individuals, and, um, I, uh, I just think they deserve a lot of recognition. You see a lot of, you don't see a lot of things that happen. You don't see the, the water lines that get repaired, you don't see the, uh, the fire hydrants, one of the 11, 1200 fire hydrants that need to be exercised at least once a year. Um, not to mention, I can't remember how many hundreds of valves we have that, that need to be, uh, changed. Anyway, so, uh, I am very proud of, of our team, and, uh, we're ready when and if the snow flies. We have plenty of, of, of salt. Knock on wood here. And, um, our crew is ready. So, uh, anyway, I just wanted to, uh, say thank you to our, our, our team members for all the work that they do, um, throughout the year. That is all, sir.
Mrs. Sayers?
All the fan, all the fan, all right, yeah. All the, my turn. All the fanfare aside, uh, thank you for supporting this legislation. We're ready to get to work now. Thank you.
Scott?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Mr. Starr?
So I sent out a report to all of you today, and, uh, I knew it was good. I didn't know how good until I saw a smile on Mike's face when he came, when I came in tonight. So, uh, we had, uh, had Lisa send me the receipts as of today. So what I sent you and what's up there is as of today. So there's still a couple more days, which could add a little bit. But this year, right now, as of today, we've, uh, collected over 20 million of income tax receipts, which is a record. If you go clear back to 2018, when we enacted the 2% rate, the, the receipts have been, uh, increasing. So what, you look at 2019, before COVID, we were just under 17 million, and now we're at 20 million. I had to change my scale on my, uh, graph, so, um, but anyway, it shows you at the top the total amount as you go across, and then it breaks it down. The withholding is, is, as I've said before, the big piece that, uh, is the golden goose for what we do here, uh, to collect income tax. That has been steadily increasing. The resident, uh, tax with people that live here but maybe work out of town, uh, that stayed pretty constant through all the years. And, um, the business tax this year is almost $5 million, which is blown away every other year. So, anyway, I thought that was really good, and just wanted to share it with you for the upcoming budget meeting.
We like good news. President? Mr. Boren?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mrs. Woods?
So I'll just, I'll just stand on a high note here and thank Michael Paul Hillier. It's like being at high school graduation and learning everybody's middle name. Um, for all the times you took my calls when I needed guidance or wanted to know who to talk to, it doesn't seem like much, but thank you.
Mrs. Sievel?
Thank you. Um, I just want to say Happy New Year and see everybody next year.
Except for Mike. About 10 minutes, that's over.
Mr. Mahan?
Uh, I also want to thank Councilman Hillier. He was the first person to reach out to me when I was appointed, uh, to this position. He's been personally helpful and encouraging. Obviously, he does his homework, and I have never, ever wondered what he was thinking because it was very clear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mrs. Keener?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to wish Mike good luck. He has taught me a lot. I also would like to bring up something and ask Brian. I know that there's changing coming, changes coming to Riverview Park. Do we have any idea when we can expect those because the utility's going or changes there? Do you have a timeline at all?
I don't have a timeline. Um, the AEP has requested an estimate to remove all of the steel structures that were placed under the high-voltage power lines, so I'm working with, uh, two different companies to get that. And then I'll turn that into AEP, and then there's some negotiation and, uh, back and forth, so I don't have that. They haven't told me when they're gonna start construction.
Okay. Can we have an update when things start to roll?
Yep. Yeah, it, it'll be a several-step process.
All right. Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Um, I would like to congratulate Councilman Hillier on his retirement. I'm gonna miss not seeing you in PACMIL, uh, as was a frequent occurrence, um, when we would ship things after our auctions, so, and, uh, here on city council. So wish you all the best and wish everyone else a Happy New Year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Severns?
Yes, I actually wrote out some things from Mr. Hillier, so I wouldn't forget him and mess him up. So Mike, thank you for your long-term service to the residents in Mount Vernon, Ohio. You have worked for the people. That is what public service is all about, a good example for me and others to follow. Thank you for your encouragement to me as a new council member. You have helped me to look at issues from more than one perspective, and I appreciate that. Thank you for advocating for me and the residents in my neighborhood on matters relating to city and community living. You reached out to us when we were trying to solve some issues up there on our, and I appreciate it. I appreciate your preparation for committee and legislative sessions. You ask good and probing questions that necessitate follow-up from administration, and I think that's good. Thanks for being a friend, and I wish you and your lovely wife, um, happiness and life ahead.
Thank you.
I'm filing you, Mr. Hillier.
Last words. Um, first of all, thank you for everything, everything you've said, Mr. Carr, thank you, um, what you've said, um, thank you for the flag. I appreciate that. Um, I wrote down a few notes as well. Um, this meeting didn't quite go as, go as I hoped it would end on a little better note, but I do feel I accomplished what I needed to do here, and I, I will say this. In the 16 years I was here, I still remember the one vote I did I wish I never voted yes. And I think I've told you, and I can't take that vote back, but what it did, it made me, I, I was new. And listen to what everybody said, it's a good idea, and I thought, let's go for it. And to this day, I regret that, that yes, but, and I, I build on it. That was new in my career on council.